I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, April 7, 2014, at 7:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Option of agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I was just going to ask how the rest of the board felt about 20D. I would really like to have a little more time where we could sit down, maybe even after Wednesday's meeting, and compare our notes and see how everybody feels about all the before that we interviewed, but that's up to the rest of you.
I have a suggestion, if you'd like, we could put it at the end of each other right now and then have that discussion at that time.
Well, it's more of a, like, round table, like, you know, this is what, you know, more...
It's the board's pleasure.
What is our meeting, yeah, what's our meeting, Wednesday?
Wednesday is, starts at 6:00.
6:00.
Workshop for the healthcare. So I just thought even after, like, half hour, we just toss things around. I mean, there's not an urgency to do this, but...
Fine, by me, whatever the board prefers. You talking, putting it on the next agenda?
Right.
So we would discuss it with our other meeting that we have going on afterwards and then not make a decision until next?
There's my thoughts, but it's up to the rest of you. I mean, I know a couple of the engineers are here and wanting to know, but I, there's no, I don't want to be hasty, I want to hear what everybody else picked up from the interviews and, you know.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that. We just need to make sure that we, if we don't have time at the end of that meeting, if it's too late, that we set up one and actually do this before the next meeting. I don't have a problem with that. I want everybody to be comfortable with it, our decision to make.
Well, we could either just leave this on today's agenda when we come to it, table it, or instead of taking it off, but whatever, whatever's the board's pleasure.
I'll follow that.
What is proper?
Well, this is really at the board's discretion, whether it leaves its, it's in control of its own agenda. If you are not going to cover this topic when it comes up on the agenda, taking it off the agenda at this time or postponing it, you can certainly take care of that at this time. That way, anybody who's in the audience for that item doesn't stick around through the whole agenda, waiting for it just to hear you table it. So that is in your discretion, I think.
You'd like that removed, is what you're saying, at this time?
Yes.
Okay. We also have a request for the Yoga Fit class request to be removed also, for that individual. So you would like, engineer removed, Yoga Fit removed, any other deletions?
You're removing the Yoga Fit?
She's called in and asked it, the person who requested it is asking it for being removed at this time, correct, Jeanette?
Yeah.
Are we tabling the engineers or removing them?
She's asking you if they'll be removed from the, from the agenda at this time.
Well, only because Ron mentioned he didn't want anybody to stick around. I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda, removing item 20C Yoga Fit class request and item D Township Engineer Firm selection to be put on the next agenda. Agenda in the meantime, discussion between board members.
It's part. Motion by trustee attorney, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other discussion? Any more additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry to make you people come out that were here for the end. I want to be sure. Thank you.
Public comment. Any public comments at this time? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Bruce Washington, and I'm at 67, 330 Pat Schalk, just off of 32 Mile. And I just wanted to make certain, but I found out today that they were actively working on it already, I didn't know until I came to a meeting today, about possible toxic dumping at the Pippin Zeg gravel pit area, where they have hundreds of tons of asphalt and cement that are dumped in the backfield on his property. That I'm worried about is contaminating the groundwater as well as causing detrimental effect on the value of the property in that area. And I would just like to know that the board is working on it, investigating it, and to do everything in the best interest of the population.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Thank you for the pictures.
I'm Marie Vertasi, here for Bill and Amy Esper, 32,200, 32 Mau. As Mr. Washington addressed, was the Pippin Zeg site. I would like to get a clarification. What does the special land use mining permit consist of?
What I can do, I can refer to the attorney at this time for you, Mr. Vertasi. Steve, if you'd like to.
Yes, well, it might just be easiest to provide you a copy of the permit itself, and you can take a look at that and see what it entails. You'd also want to look at that in conjunction with the zoning ordinance provisions that apply to it.
Okay. I've been involved with this for the last 10, 11 years, and to my understanding, the mining permit is to export materials from the site. Would that be correct?
Well, again, we're, I've been brought into this more recently, haven't had an opportunity to go through, and usually the investigation occurs and then it's brought to my office and I analyze it and look at all the facts and information that's been gathered, including the information provided today, put that up against the permit and the ordinance, and make a determination whether there's cause to believe that there has been a violation of the ordinance or permit. So I'm not prepared at this point to make a determination in that regard at this time.
My parents talked with Mrs. Antbacher and the board last fall about the situation already before they left for the winter. Will that information be included in the investigation?
If there's, if there was information provided at that time, we could certainly ask that it be included in.
Any and all information will be provided. Also, too, we have, we have started the process on this. Mr. Joppik, like you said, has just been recently brought into this, and we are doing our due diligence at this time.
Okay. So you guys are pretty much aware of the extent of the issue?
We, we have sent the code enforcement officer on-site and have pictures.
Okay. Can I ask to be the contact person for my parents?
I would say at this time it would be myself or Mr. Joppik. Would you agree with that, Steve?
Yes, but I think what she's asking is, can you be considered the contact for your parents for some certain reason?
That right now they're not in state and health-wise.
Well, I understand what you're saying now. I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you meant.
Yeah, you know, that they're not...
If you would leave your information, would you not? By all means, right? Be happy.
Sorry, additionally, I have one question on the gravel pit designation and the renewal. Since that original contract had completely expired, and this is a year-to-year renewal presently, do we notify people, and it's going to come out for a vote, so that the township people in the area can come in and discuss concerns or other things about the permit before it's renewed, or is it just on, at a meeting behind doors?
There hasn't been notification, but I can pretty much tell you it's usually on the January, February agenda for the planning commission, in the February, March for this board.
It is, it is posted, Dr. Washington, and it is in front of public audience here at the hall.
Okay. Do we know then, has that permit already been reissued again for another year?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Approval of minutes, 3:3, 2014, 3:27, 2014. I think the motion, no approval of minutes is presented. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Antbacher. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff report.
Hold on just a second. It should be on the February minutes that you can get online. Okay, because I was, that's what I was looking to see, if it was in March, and it's not, so...
Regarding the question, February minutes?
It should be on the February minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a question. You knew that if someone made a complaint regarding that mining pit that's supposed to be exporting sand, and you had someone who notified you that they are importing and bringing things that aren't part of the permit, and then you also went ahead and renewed their license for mining, again, wouldn't you have already kind of investigated this or been looking into it? Knowing, you know...
I can tell you this, anytime a complaint is given, a writ, it's a written, signed, dated complaint, the code enforcement officer goes out and investigates.
Okay, so they would have been aware already then, from last year?
I mean, if we received a written, signed, dated complaint, he was out there.
Okay.
Also, too, we do have the building inspector who does do drive-bys on the site. Bob, I don't know if you want to address that. I know you do that throughout the year. But if something's procced our attention, we send him out, we start our due diligence, like I said, our inspection.
Well, at this point, there's definitely, it's there.
We, and we...
Even though he knocked it down, but then from Friday to today, it's been completely knocked down.
We do have pictures prior to that.
Okay.
Also, he stood right next to the pile and took pictures.
Okay.
So he went on, actually on-site. We contacted them, he went on-site to do it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Did you have anything more you wanted to add to that, Jody?
No, I just wanted to let them know which minutes to look at.
Okay, thank you. I don't have sheriff's report this time. Our department report, chief.
Evening, everyone. Just a couple items. First one, should have my report in front of you. Ron, as I told you right before the meeting, apparently I'm having some email problems are not going out. Did any of you receive my email on Saturday? No? Okay, then. Jody, could you please have him come out ASAP, because... Next item, really happy to report that received a grant from the Enbridge Underground Pipeline Company, and the pipeline does run through our community. I submitted a grant back, I believe it was either December or January, and a gentleman came in a week and a half ago and hand-delivered us a check. So we got, received a check, the amount, it's a small grant, but we received a grant in the amount of $1,000, and that's going towards the purchase of a piece of equipment to go on our Engine 1. So it was a very nice surprise. In fact, that's the third time we've received money from Enbridge, third grant we've received. So that was really good. I'll touch on the next subject just very briefly, because some things I still cannot talk about. I'm sure most people are aware that we had a fatal fire here on Friday, Friday morning occurred in the township on Place Road, and unfortunately, the homeowner died inside the building, and upon our arrival, it was 100% involved with fire, because there was no, no possibility of any chance of saving him. We received mutual aid from six other departments. We went to what's known as a third alarm, went first to a second alarm, then to a third alarm, as well as all of our partners and from Richmond Linux EMS, and several deputies were on the scene. Once the fire was completely put out, the arson investigation team from McCoal County Sheriff's Department arrived, four-person team, and we worked that site until, we left the site approximately 7:30 that night, and then they were back out all day on Saturday, and then my crew, myself and a crew of four others, were back out there also assisting them. So at this time, the fire is determined as undetermined. The origin is listed as somewhere on the second floor of the barn. Other than that, we don't have anything further. I can't tell you anything further on the victim, on cause of death, or anything else. But I did send you and all an email to let you know so you weren't blindsided in case the media contacted you, because my phone, of course, blew up with media calls as well as my emails, so I answered everybody as best we could, provided the information the best we could. Most of it, though, I've turned over to the sheriff department as far as providing information about the victim. So that's all I have for my report at this time, unless there are any questions.
Is there any other family with this?
Yeah, his wife lives, lives at the house.
Okay. Is, is it, was the house burned or the barn?
The barn was totally consumed. There is damage to the house, to the gazebo. There were two vehicles parked behind the house, two cars, or behind the barn, I'm sorry, that were destroyed, as well as two utility trailers.
Okay, does this family need help from the community, is what I'm trying to...
I would say not. They're fully insured. Insurance company, I've been working with them for three days already, so I would, I would say probably not. Retired couple.
And how are all of your crew doing?
Crews, as far as we know, we're having a meeting tomorrow night, are doing fairly well, so we'll...
I know you usually follow up if there's something major like that, so...
Yes, we do. We're gonna, we're gonna gauge everybody and then...
Be sure it's followed.
I've already sent an email, of course, I don't know if they received it now, sent an email to all the, all the chiefs that assisted us from the six departments, so I'll follow up again once I, we make sure that the email count is back up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No further questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
EMS report.
Good evening.
Evening.
Briefly, you know, as well as with the fire department, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family on the tragic loss on the fire on Place Road. Challenging for all of us when you get there and realize there's very little that can be done. We're all doers, and when there's not much you can do, it certainly has an effect on, on everybody. The only thing that I want to make sure I, I mention to all of you tonight is I have recently sent email, as well as just this afternoon, sent out your monthly response time reports for Lenix Township, so those can just be received and filed. The other item that I'd just like to remind the board of is this Friday at 9:00 AM, following the City of Richmond's Public Officials Forum, we are going to have a meeting, which we would encourage any members of the board that are available to attend, at 9:00 AM at the EMS Station 1, with a fellow named Mr. John Swaddish. He is the number two person down at SMART after Mr. Hertel, to discuss a little bit about the upcoming millage election, where SMART is requesting a fairly significant increase in the millage from about .59 mils to one full mil. And so this will be an opportunity for board members to get a little more information from SMART, as exactly what that millage will be used to, to cover. We do use SMART monies in our community to operate, as the board's aware, a little transit buses, and so we're just not certain what effect, if any, this might have on our future funding. With that, that's all I have to report, unless there are any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. Really enjoyed the appreciation, employee appreciation party last month for EMS. It was, it was nice to be back there. I hadn't been there in a couple of years, and the way you recognize your employees is, is great. Had a good time there.
For, for the, for the knowledge of the folks in the audience, once a year, we do get all the folks that work at the EMS together, we invite the board to attend, and we recognize those members of EMS. Could be they're reached milestones in their career, or maybe taken on some act of life-saving, valor, or other meritorious service. I'll just mention, because she's right here, the lady that was really responsible for putting that all together for us this year is a lady named Marie Vertasi. Marie, on top of all else that she does, actually volunteers her time, much in the fashion of an old hospital volunteer, candy striper, if you will. She volunteers two days a week at the EMS this year, really took on the role of putting that entire get-together on for us. So Marie, thank you. I see you there in the audience.
I was gonna mention this during the supervisor's report, but since you're there and speaking to this, I, I know the board definitely too much to commend you and let the people here know that Jeff just reached a milestone in his career, 25 years of service with the EMS, running our department.
Thank you.
You'll find out, Jeff.
You kind of took the words out of my mouth, but yeah, congratulations, Jeff, and it was a wonderful part. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. GPW report.
Good evening. Just wanted to cover a couple topics. Most of this is for file and receive. Number one, I wanted to touch on our current status of our state reporting. I was able to file two reports that are required with the DAQ already, and in the process of filing our last one for the year. The last one is our consumer confidence report, that's not due till July 1st, and we're in the process of distributing that, and we can certify it and close that out. The other item I wanted to touch on is 26 Mile Pump Station. We incurred a number of failure out there a couple weeks ago. It was the same pump that we've had issue with before. Once we were, once we got out there, we were able to determine that it was a failure because of the way the pump was installed. We did have the contractor come out, they looked at it, and after some discussion, they covered the warranty completely. So, good thing is, is it was probably about $2,000 repair, because of what occurred, and they stepped up and claimed responsibility for it. So fortunately, that pump was only down a short period of time. They turned that repair right around, got back out, and got everything back to full service. Other than, normal, normal monthly stuff we've been working on, as you can see, looks like spring is finally starting to arrive, so we're already starting to work towards getting the park opened up and getting the equipment ready for coming summer season.
You're optimistic, I see you put the cloud away.
I did. I, I'm willing, I'm willing it to turn nice. It's one of those things, it's like, how long am I gonna wait? Fortunately...
Still available, though.
Sure, I mean, it was very tough to, you know, not to do it, not to get, you know, the, rid of the last of our salt supply that we had, but like I said, I just kind of willing it to get nicer and start to move in a different direction. If something were to occur, I mean, it's not unusual to still, I hate to say it, have snow at this time of the year, it would not take very long to get that equipment back down and put in use, so that's why I made the decision, but we're, we're willing it to get nicer, so hopefully we keep going in this direction. Other than that, like I said, normal monthly things. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
The only thing I was gonna tell you was, there were some kids out on Saturday, they were to roller blade, and they decided to go swimming instead.
Well, we did, we did pull the plugs on the hockey court over a week ago, but because of the excessive frost in the ground and everything still being frozen, it just doesn't want to drain yet. So this could be a little bit of a process. I know when I came in, I seen them on the basketball court, so it's also not on the tennis court.
That was our, our main concern. We asked everybody to keep an eye on it, because it kind of tends to happen sometimes, they, that will destroy the tennis court.
Yeah, the coating is very expensive and it will not withstand that kind of use.
Everybody's been pretty respectful.
Yes, yes, yeah. As you may, one, you know, kind of talking about the park, I know I didn't include it in my, in my report, some of you may notice I put signs on the soccer courts, or soccer fields about staying off the grass. Because the ground is so soft, any foot traffic will just tear up the turf at this time. Fields aren't even close to being ready. I know soccer season has already started in some areas, but in order for those steel fields to stay in a good condition, we need to stay off of them until they dry and the grass starts taking hold. Because if we start on them prematurely, there won't be much grass out there.
I, I think we should keep the same policy. You determine when the fields are opened up, based on, on weather conditions and ground conditions, and that's when we give the go-ahead.
Yeah, I mean, last year, we had a couple groups that played against our advice, and we had to spend a lot of time rolling fields, because if we would have let it wait until it dried, it would have been unplayable. It would have cost us thousands of dollars to repair it.
Right. Maybe just make sure it's posted correctly, or something of that nature.
Veronica's sent emails to every person that has reserved time, you know, that normally plays here, and as well as the signs of...
Right, I'll tell you, I did.
I mean, we've done, we've done our due diligence, sort of a 24-hour guard, if you will.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Co-enforcement report.
Michigan Lake Control Commission report has been filed with clerk's office.
Thank you. Assessing Department report. Any questions for assessing?
No questions, please proceed.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Library report. You want to address this one, or do you want me to? I'll be happy to address this. Their report is Lenix Township Library will be closed Friday, April 19th through Sunday, April 22nd for the Easter holiday. They will reopen on Monday, April 23rd. The report, they're saying they reopen on Monday, April 23rd.
They're just gonna be closed during the Easter holiday. Wednesday, the 23rd, Tuesday, the 24th.
Okay.
Maybe Monday, the day after Easter.
Yeah, I'm sure she made a mistake. What is the actual date on it, then?
They'd be reopening on Monday, the 21st.
Monday, the 21st, thank you.
I don't think she's here, we all have her report, but I would like to say that my husband and I went on a trip with the seniors. They had a bus go out of here a week ago, Friday. We went to Toledo. Guess where? On the Molly River, the casino run-in. Luann does a fantastic job. She's very, very good with the seniors and...
I've had positive feedback, very positive feedback.
Very, very good. They all think a lot of her and really appreciate what we're doing, so...
Yeah, she's brought a lot of energy to the program.
She's got a lot going on on her plate right now, and she, you wouldn't know it, she's, she keeps up with everything.
Wish her and her family very well. Supervisors report. I'd like to follow up... I'd like to follow up this time and we're getting a lot of, we're going to address this later under new business, under limestone application. But our roads, our gravel roads, we are dealing with a lot of frost coming out of the ground and I'll get more into that. But I did contact the road commission, spoke to Bob Hockner himself. Not only are we monitoring our roads now too, but we're going to start a new project. We're going to monitor our, our ditches and our, started ditching project. There's a lot of areas where we do thumbs up. We're going to start monitoring and bringing to his attention. And it's not so much, not even the ditching, but them cutting that edge off that road when they do the grading too. Because what it's doing is containing a lot of water on our roads, causing a lot of issues. We've discussed it at length. It does come down to a monetary issue once again. But he's assured me that if we start working together on this and bringing specific areas to his attention, we'll start knocking these out little by little as, as, you know, the money's available. So that's going to be one of our calls this year to get with DPW once again and our emergency vehicles as far as EMS and fire to make sure we tackle the roughest areas first. So that's going to start to take place. Also too, just to let everybody know, I've been in contact with the Mooji Group. They're still going forward. And the other offices that are helping with that, that's still going forward. It's taking time. They did tell me how much the weather played havoc on their businesses this year. The cost of heating just was astronomical for businesses. So they're just trying to keep things going forward and deal with those issues as they come. But they are still pursuing Limestone Township. That's all I have at this time. Treasure report.
Well, you guys are looking that over in case you have any questions. I, we finished up, we wrapped up our tax season, February 28th. And I'm trying to get my stuff down to the county where we had a bit of a stumbling block with our board of review went a little longer than what we expected. And so assessing office hasn't gotten me my paperwork that I need to do my stuff with the county. Normally by April 1st, I have all the bills, all the money sent out and everything recorded. I did call the county, let them know that we have a hiccup and that we're a little behind times. I guess we're not the only one. The county has changed to a BSA system also. And they're having some hiccups with that down there. So that's the whole thing that's saving me right now. I've never been this late before trying to get my stuff down there. We only got about a month or two in between here and it's time to send bills out again, 1st of July. So just want to let everybody know that what we're doing. And does anyone have any questions on the treasures report?
Has the assessing department gotten you what you need?
He's working on it.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasures report.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fosed. Motion carries. Orders and bills.
There was a kind of a mix-up on the water sewer bill. It looks like Detroit had credited the wrong amount. And so they were showing us a credit on one bill. So I had to add that amount back in. So it's, the new amount is $204,870.73.
Did you repeat that one more time? $204,800? Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills in the amount of $204,870.73.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any other questions? Discussion. Deputy Clerk, roll call please.
Churchy, aye. Boyd?
Aye.
Bacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Tronby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Trustees report. Trustee Churchy.
Really have nothing new at this time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd.
Yeah, I have nothing else. Nothing myself.
Okay, thank you. Clerk's report.
We are ramping up for the May 6th New Haven recall election. This one is a little bit different. It's not a normal recall because they changed the laws and the way they do things. So the actual ballot is out on the website for those that want to see it. It's, this is a Village of New Haven election only and that's on May 6th. Also, the August festival that is promoted by Rose Celluloid Florist is being planned out and she's looking for vendors. And I'll actually get some of those flyers out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receiving file on courts.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Other discussions? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fosed. Motion passes. No unfinished businesses this time? New business. Letter A. 2014 limestone application. Sir. Once again, I'll start with a quick summary. Once again, our limestone application has been determined by our director of our DPW, our fire chief and our EMS director. The most needed areas for safety in our community is typically what we look at first. This year, we did receive some complaints from residents also that need to be addressed. And with saying that, I'll let you go ahead on your survey cam.
Last Thursday, excuse me, last Thursday morning, I did take the time to drive all of the dirt roads that we have in the township. I was able to identify four different locations that would be suited for the limestone application this year. One of those areas would be Omo, just north of New Haven Road, 229 and then back east on 29. That would meet the area that we did in 2010. So that would be one mile there.
That, that abuts a previous application is what you're saying?
Yes, that would, that would tie in an area that we did on 29 Mile Road. Actually, two different areas, three different areas we did on 29 Mile Road. So that would complete 29 Mile Road from Haven Ridge all the way to Omo. Second location was 30 mile from Omo to Place. Third location, 31 Mile Road, just east of Peshawk. Basically, you'd be looking from Peshawk to Little Plank. And the fourth location would be 31 Mile Road from Omo to Place.
And just so everybody understands too, we've been able to get an extra mile every year. Typically, it's a two-mile designation. We fell under this program with the county where the cost is dispersed 90% to the county, 10% to the township. So we're getting our limestone applications at 10% cost. We've been able to pick up an extra mile. So every year since we initiated this, we've always asked for an extra mile. And if they have any leftover miles by any other communities that are not using them, at 10% of the cost, we feel we should grab that any chance we get to save money into further condition of our roads. So every year, we're getting three miles, 30% total cost to us. Or, I'm sorry, 10% cost total to us, 90% to the county. We couldn't ask for a better plan. Of course, we'd like to get more and get it done quicker. But with our road maintenance program, we're able to see where we've left off, where to continue. Sometimes, I know in the past, we've furthered just to knock the road out so we don't have to come back to it and it maintains its integrity. The one area, Jeanette, I'd like to discuss too, what was the most complaint area that we received by the residents? Because I would like to bring that into the record too, so that they are aware that we are hearing their complaints and listening to them. And I would also like recommendations from EMS and fire chief, please. 30 mile from Omo or north of that. Everybody should have a list of it. I just want to read it for the record.
It is Omo Road, I'm sorry, 30 mile west of Omo Road going to the border of our township. I've been keeping track for the past year. I've had three calls from residents throughout the year. In the last two weeks, two and a half weeks, I've gotten 10 calls.
One of the other problems that we're faced with is the county calls us very early in the year to, for us to designate our areas for limestone. We don't feel that's appropriate. Until the snow and the ice is gone, until the frost is coming out of the ground, I don't think you have a true picture of exactly what we're dealing with. We've discussed that with them. They actually agree that that's the proper way. But they say we get put down further on the list to get these applications. I would rather err on that side of caution, making sure we address the proper areas instead of designating three roads and while there's a foot of snow out there, we can't really see what's going on. So we've been late always to designate these roads based on road condition. That means once the ice and the snow is removed, once they get to drive the roads and see the condition, then we make our determinations, submit them to the county. And we just had this talk with the director. He understands and is well aware of it.
Okay, one correction. It's not three roads.
Three miles.
The county told many residents of three roads.
You're right. I could make the same mistake again. It's three miles of our roads.
Yes, and we can use them a half a mile here and a half a mile there, up to, you know, the three all miles in one stretch. It's up to the board to decide.
Thanks for that correction, Cam. And we, that's the one good thing. We have been able, we've talked them into where we can split up our applications.
Correct.
So we use it where, where it's best needed.
And also, as soon as I received the email with Ron's direction, I let them know right away that yes, we want the three miles. But we're, the board likes to wait till spring to decide on which roads to designate. And at that time, they never, they never say anything. They don't say yes or no or anything until now when it's crunch time and they've got to get their paperwork in. And now they say, well, the lady's waiting.
You don't get a true representation of what's, what's in these roads.
Correct, right, exactly.
So Jeanette, the email that you originally got said that our deadline was February 1st.
Correct.
Could we have, back in October when they sent this, could we have had it on the agenda and said, yes, we want to take advantage of these three miles, but we don't want to give you.
We've told them.
And that's what I've told them through email and, you know, and over the phone. And they're fine with that when I speak to them. But it's this time of the year when they say, well, no, we really have to have that information, you know.
We've told them that every year that we've had this program. It's the process. And we still have to tell them every year. And actually, I spoke directly to Bob Hockner, the head man, and he agrees. He's like, I understand exactly what you're doing. We agree.
What do the other communities do? Don't they have the same problem that we do? I mean, everybody's roads are very different.
According to the county, they are telling them they want the three miles and they are designating at that time what roads. I don't know if they're using the same system with this map or not, but they're designating their roads and that's what they're doing.
In other words, come fall, we need our guys to go out there and figure out what's bad. And so we jump in and we get the roads we want and not get shoved.
I understand.
It's not necessarily get the roads that we want. We can get them. It's just it happens later in the season for us. We get, it might be August before we get our limestone instead of June, like some of the other communities.
For us, spring is the best determination to check our roads. In the, in the fall, they've been maintained in certain spots. They will, if there's other trouble areas, they will partially maintain them throughout the year. So for us, when that spring comes after this frost comes out, they drive these roads. They get, and I don't know, Daddy, if you want to comment on that or Jeff, if you would agree with that.
We already talked to Kim about all this, so.
Do you agree with her, spring?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think the biggest thing is that we should get this on the agenda when this first comes out so that the county's aware. We've already approved it. It's going to happen. And not give them the roads until we have a better idea of which roads. That's all.
Well, they're called immediately. They know we want the program. They know, we've told them every year, you have to wait. You have to wait till we determine what roads.
Well, next year I'll go ahead and as soon as I get the email, I'll pass it out and put it on the agenda right away. We'll just.
At least they'll know.
See if it helps, see if it shakes them.
Right.
They want, they're more concerned with designation. That's what they want. They want us to designate the three miles that we want. That's all they care about.
And maybe at this stage, because we have so many roads done, it'll be easier to designate roads next year.
This mapping system makes it very easy to tell where we've been and where we're at.
Yep. My husband's done a great job with keeping it updated and.
And actually, he caught the area we were being charged before for mileage on the brine and chloride applications. We were paying for it and we did not have that many miles. He caught that, corrected them. And actually, the county had the wrong information too.
I'm just concerned that maybe if we did it a little different, told them we wanted it. Because there is, in the past, they had extra miles they'd given us. And maybe if we did that and we're not down at the bottom of the list, maybe we'd get a chance to take advantage of some extra.
Right. That was in the first couple of years of doing the program. It was like one or two miles, two miles, I think it was. And some communities at that time couldn't afford even that. So we were able to acquire other miles. But now they're saying, the way they worked out the budget, every community gets three miles and that's it.
Yep. And we, and actually, we went even further than that. We've made Mr. Hockner aware. If by any chance, there's any leftover limestone applications, we want them. We want to be first on the list. We want them. I made it very, I couldn't make it any clearer to him. And that's why even having this conversation with him, we initiate, going to initiate this ditching program with the TPW checking and he's going to start a map regarding that, mapping the township with an engineer on that because that's such a prevalent problem, problem in our community. And Cam, I don't know if you want to explain that crowding and that edging of the roads and just real quick to let everybody know what, what that problem does on cutting roads.
Yeah, I mean, it's like Jeanette mentioned, every year I do this, it's getting tougher and tougher to say these areas are worse than others. And especially now since the frost is still living around because I'm not getting a true representation. There's no doubt, just about every area needs a blade drawn across it. But there are some areas that if you really look at it, the height of the road versus where the ditch edge is and you can just see from the edge of the berm, it's just holding water. And those areas will let, you know, the only time they're going to heal up is when we get to near drought conditions. That's about the only time it'll get dry enough to drive through. There's some areas that, there are no ditches. There's some areas that have okay ditches. You know, again, to say, you know, there's not too many areas that doesn't need attention in the ditching area throughout the township. So we're going to try and use a rating scale, you know, what areas need the worst, you know, as far as if it doesn't need any, but it should be there or they're just not working.
Yeah, we've had discussion. Does it have existing ditching? Is it sufficient ditching? No ditching. We, this is what we need to identify basically.
Then of course, you know, we have to look at, you know, we don't want to shift the problem from one area to another. You know, so there may be a starting point that we have to work from so the water has a place to leave completely instead of just shifting the problem down the road. You know, there was, there was more than a few areas this, this spring, you know, and the thaw was kind of slow really. But there was a few areas where we had water over the roads and running across roads for days. But if you drive through those areas right now, really if they're touched up with a blade, they would really be in pretty good shape. But they need the ditching. So as we move forward, it's going to take time. But I would, I would believe that those areas are going to improve greatly. areas are going to improve greatly.
This, with this new ditching program, you're going to be the one going out and looking at all this stuff and making the recommendations? My concern is, what's this going to cost us and doesn't the county have somebody that does that? Don't they have somebody that should be coming out and looking at the roads and saying, these ditches need to be done? And all the stuff that they're asking you to do, I mean, that's, you're kind of doing their job for them. I understand it's maybe going to move the process up a little faster, but my, you know, money's...
Probably going to move the process along a lot faster, because, and I hate to put it this way, but in the way for them, they're not going to get to it until it's a real, real problem.
Is it going to be just you doing it?
At this point, yes, it's just going to be my time. You know, and then, of course, I'm going to have to prioritize time for that in between my other duties.
Absolutely.
You know, right now is the best time, because, obviously, because of the amount of groundwater and water lane, you're going to be able to see things better. Once the vegetation grows up, it's going to be a little bit harder to tell. So, hopefully, I can get on this pretty quick and at least target some areas that we can push them for this year. I mean, I'm sure we're only going to get so much, because the size of the crew in this area, you know, they're spread pretty thin.
I can tell you, they just hired two more for New Haven, first one, I know yesterday talking to one of the guys on the DPW, so hopefully, that's a good thing for us.
And that's great, but it takes time to get those individuals to the point where they know how to grade roads, or even run equipment.
That's a ball of wax right there, they got to know how to scrape the roads.
Fortunately, we don't have any control over that situation, we can just, when we see an issue with it, we bring it to their attention, try to correct it, and that's like this ditching problem, I think if we don't push hard for this, take matters in our own hands, trying to identify these problems and keep it on their radar, it's going to be overlooked. Simply put, it's going to be overlooked, and it hasn't been done, so this is the only way we can think of, and talking with the director, we're there to get this done.
And one last thought with the limestone, it's just, you know, I don't drive the roads, I know that you and Jeff and Denny should take care of it, and, you know, I don't try to second guess any of that, because that's not my expertise, but realistically, could we take six miles this year and the three that are the least of the six, set them up for next year, so that we can, when they want to know, we can tell them, these are the three miles? I mean, if they're really bad this year, are they still going to be the worst next year?
I think there's too many, I'll answer that, I think there's too many variables. What if we have a ditching project that goes by one of the roads? What if other variables take place, as far as rerouting construction traffic? There's things that could change that road through the course of the year. Until the springtime, when that's been played out, I don't think, think you know. But I don't know if you want to comment any further on that.
Is the limestone more of a winter fix or a summer fix?
Limestone is more of a permanent fix, it's to rebuild the base of the road.
Well, I'm just thinking, because we wait so long, like Jeanette said, instead of June, we're getting it in September, and if we set up and we actually responded when they asked us to, and I'm just throwing this out there, just wondering, we're getting it done at the beginning of summer, is that going to make the roads better quicker? You know, it obviously does.
Yeah, just for the sort of fact of compaction. Okay, you're going to get areas that are going to pack and get tighter, because they're going to have longer to have more traffic on them. You know, in the past, we've given our roads way later than this, and they got them done in a reasonable amount of time. I, you know, I've had difficulty this year, why there's such a push for the locations. They know we want it, they always know they want, that we want it, but why do they have to have the exact locations?
Yeah, my thought too.
Is a mystery. And I don't understand the big push for it.
If the board determines they want it done earlier, we have a mapping place that shows every area that's not been done. But I think we'd be premature.
If you want to, you know, if you want to look ahead and determine, you know, three or six miles for next year, you know, with the road improvement maps we have now, it's really easy to look and start filling in some of the gaps that have been created because of problem areas. And really, we're getting at that point where we need to start filling these gaps, and that way, roads are complete and we can move forward to start doing all the...
Is that something you would recommend, doing it, looking at the map now for next year and start filling some of these gaps?
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, yes, let's do all these, and then, we have residents that are complaining, because we have bigger problem areas, because of what the weather conditions did or what traffic did. I mean, a couple of years ago, when they did the twenty-six mile road bridges, for instance, it beat the heck out of twenty-seven mile road because of the detours.
And we're going to have that with New Haven opening up next year. Look, I understand.
Twenty-eight is already looking rough, but they've, they've dumped a ton of material in that, and they're doing, I know they're doing the best they can amongst everything else to keep it up right now. But we, we may find that next year is still, still struggling, we need to put some more to it. So, that's why I don't feel comfortable making those determinations that far up.
And speaking to that, because of that detour on New Haven Road, our road is catching a bit bluntly hell. And that corner, when you come off the hash falls onto the bottom, just falls out of it, they dump gravel in it.
And I think, and that's for example, I think the way we're doing it, I think we take every precaution, and I think it's, I don't think we could do it any better, based with EMS, fire, DPW, and waiting till the frost comes out, that the condition is what it is at that point.
But that, but that corner is like that all year round, they dump gravel in, it washes out, we're trying to go around the holes.
How's the ditching there?
We don't have, well, there's ditches.
That's what we're going to determine, and that could be a variable that could affect that.
A little bit of that might be, that's, that's one of them turns too, when they turn on, they can go awfully fast to make that turn, and that tears it up too.
Well, not only that, but when the bottom falls out of the road, then everybody's trying to go around outside, pretty soon, that bottom's falling out there too.
I, I think this process will work. Before, we didn't, we didn't have any of this in place. No one knew where the last application is without going back in the archives, looking it all up. We have a map right in front of us now, every day, that we can look, okay, where was the last limestone base put, from where to where? If anybody ever wants to see it too, we have it available right here at the township. So, if, one of the other things the director has, asked me, he does not like taking complaints from us, we, we give him complaints, but he has asked me directly to please, if any residents have any issues, to have, call him directly. He wants to be bothered with them, is what he's told me. Bob Hockner, he would like to be called on any of the road complaints, so...
And I can tell you, my son calls regularly and they come out. They do come out when he calls in complaints. He calls the DPW, he gets the phone number out of the, out of the book.
We have the number here too, if anybody would like it, we can get it to you.
Getting back to my recommendations, I gave you four areas, each one of those areas is about a mile, so you need to pick three out of those four.
Which one would you recommend, Jeanette?
I would definitely do Omo, because that was pretty near passable, and the heights of the road versus what ditches are there currently. I know we did receive a lot of complaints on thirty mile, and if we were to do the section of thirty-one from place to Omo, that would pretty much conclude that whole northwest corner.
So, leave out the Pass Hawk and Oak Lake unless we get a fourth mile?
Correct, right now. And that may be something we can tie into when we get to improving Pass Hawk and wrap it around the corner there.
And thirty-one to place covers the complaint area, the majority of the complaint area, correct?
From what I understand, we just received a lot of calls for the thirty mile area.
Jeanette, the thirty, thirty-one to place, thirty-one and almost to place covers the majority of all the complaints, correct? That's the other side. Or, I'm sorry, thirty and Omo to place.
Thirty mile from Place Road going west to the end of our township, past Omo to the very end.
Okay, none of this touches what the... All right, so the one in, the east of Pass Hawk doesn't have the complaints on it, that was just one of yours. I just want to make sure that that heavy complaint area is covered.
It's not, it's not, you know, one of the ones suggested.
You didn't suggest that, are you?
Which?
Thirty mile, more than North Avenue.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
Thirty mile from Omo to North Avenue, which I think actually, a lot of that is right township.
I, I didn't really say much about west of Omo, because those stretches are so short.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest with you, thirty-one mile road, it's one-tenth.
Tenth of a mile?
Thirty mile road is three-tenths. You know, and thirty mile, they have the huge pavement intersection.
This sec, this section of complaints, the thirty mile, which one is this exactly covering? Thirty mile and Omo?
Omo and Place.
That was one of your recommendations?
That's the one that's going to finish up that section.
Correct.
Yeah.
Make sure that's covered, is that the one?
Complaints that I received, you mean?
These right here.
Okay.
Well, then, you gotta, I mean, you gotta realize too, just because that's the one you got the most complaints on, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the worst road, that just means that's, that's the one you got the most calls on.
Right.
That's correct.
Right. I got five on Omo Road, I mean, thirty mile road.
Okay.
From Omo to the end of the township.
And that's probably every house on that road that's in the township, because it's so short.
Right, and then there's like two or three houses west of Omo to the end of the township that those four people called, because it was so bad right there, and one resident said she couldn't get to work for three days because she couldn't get out of her truck, you know, some roads were so bad. But...
That was several roads, it really was this year.
Yes.
It really was.
Kieran would come in every day saying how bad her road was.
Which, which, one more time, your recommendation one more time? Omo to New Haven, correct?
I would, I would, I actually got an address, but basically, New Haven Road, I'm sorry, Omo Road from New Haven to twenty-nine, which would be a half a mile stretch, because it starts off in New Haven Road, and then wraps around going east on twenty-nine mile road to the section we did in two thousand and ten.
Okay, that's, that's...
That would be one mile.
One mile, all right.
Thirty mile road from place to Omo, that's two miles. Thirty-one mile road from place to Omo, that would make three miles.
That's your recommendation along with the...
That way.
Jeff and Denny?
This, this...
Yeah, we, we already...
Okay. Any questions?
So, we need a motion to approve this? Do we have to be there?
We need a motion to, for his recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the limestone program as recommended by the head of DPW with the fourth mile, if it becomes available to use that, or thirty-one mile east of Pass Hawk to Oak Lake.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Hatton Bonker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that.
Sure.
Michigan Meter Technology Group Water and Shore Customer Account Audit.
Yes, some months back, I learned that the current vendor we use, that we buy all of our meter, metering and meter reading equipment from, they've started offering water billing account auditing. What that would be, since everything is done via radio with electronic equipment and the use of computer software programs, there's so many different variables and different fields to setting up these programs. And what they found is, is by doing auditing, they've actually improved the proficiency of both softwares, as well as the revenue that the community can generate through simple We changed the BSNA roughly, what, five years ago? Give or take?
Has it been that long?
I told her two thousand and ten.
So, close. The good thing is, is that BSNA has become such a, a writer's used program, that they've become very affluent with it as well, so they understand it and how it should be set up. And if these two software programs don't communicate properly, we could be losing revenue and not knowing. So, with what they're proposing is, is due to the number of accounts that we currently have, they feel that one eight-hour day would be more insufficient to come out and audit our, our billing at a cost of eight hundred dollars.
Is this a one-tenth shot, or is this something that they recommend doing every year, or every three years, or...
Actually, I talked to Mrs. Hatton Bonker about that this afternoon. Once, you know, once you go through the accounts and the parameters are set, there really shouldn't be any reason to have to redo this every year, because you don't change those parameters unless a major change is made, whether it's some kind of software programming or equipment change, you know, addition of a lot of customers, you know, so this may be something, you know, if you've made substantial growth or improvements every five years, you know, if there was no change in a five-year time, you might, you might find that it's not necessary. So, I mean, at this time, I'm kind of looking at it as a, a starting point, and then, to be determined as the, as the accounts grow.
With the amount of actual services that we have, is it realistic to think we're going to save more than eight hundred dollars?
Really, with some of the large accounts, because we have a lot, a lot of large single point users, you could, you could make that back on one account, if you found a problem on one account. I think it's money lost, but...
Yeah, at least you have a baseline to go from.
If anything, it should give us a peace of mind that our accounting is correct.
How long have we been using the meters that this is, this type of meter?
We've, we've used Neptune, excuse me, we've used Neptune meters from the beginning. We've gone through three different meter vendors, but it's only because the distributor for Neptune meters has changed.
And they all have the same type of meter?
No, I mean, sizes vary, and that, that goes along with why it's nice to have these guys do it. From say, one inch to, I believe it's four inch, it calculates cubic feet, say, per hundred. Once you get above that, they start calculating per thousand. So, you have these multipliers that have to be inputted in to make sure that you're using the same rate properly and it's calculating up to the end.
And that's what they're going to do?
Yes. And it's, there's just a lot of different calculations and multipliers that put in play and how the rates are applied. And then, of course, different, different base rates apply, and so on and so forth, per ordnances, so you have to want to make sure that those are applied probably as well.
Do they have all that information, or are you going to have to work side by side with them for a full day?
I will probably work with him side by side. I tend to do that, because I like to be hands-on, because I like to understand, because when we do have problems, it's nice to kind of have a better understanding of what the program is and what it does, rather than having to call and wait on somebody each time.
Is this something that is really necessary? Audits are good.
Absolutely.
So, one-tenth shot, you know, we're not looking at this for maybe another five years, it's worth, it's worth it for...
Peace of mind.
So. Make a motion that we approve the audit from Michigan... Make a motion that we approve the audit from Michigan Meter Technology Group on the billing audit services for BSNA versus the meter software at a cost of $800.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keyes, supported by treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Qualified voter file equipment upgrade agreement.
Many moons ago, we received the qualified voter equipment that we have now through the same type of grant from the state of Michigan. Things have changed. They are, as stated in this, that the Michigan, the operating system is being, is now obsolete. So, they are replacing all the equipment. So I just need the authority to sign the paperwork to go after this grant from the Help America Boat Act.
And from what I read, there's no cost to the township?
And this one.
I make a motion for the clerk's office to be able to pursue the qualified voter file equipment upgrade agreement.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. High Tech Systems Service Inc., contract renewal.
I had them quote out three different scenarios. The first one is what we have now. We found that we were running out of hours. We have more things going on in the township than with the equipment and setups and all that kind of stuff, that the four hours every other week is not really enough. I would like to suggest that we go six hours every other week, but only have them actually come out for the four, banking the two, so that when something does come up, such as Denny's email, we're covered under the contract. The contract actually saves us quite a bit of money on the hourly rate.
And they'll let us, you know they'll let us bank them?
Pardon me?
They will allow us to bank those hours?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, when I, when I mentioned that's what I wanted, they were...
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is remote monitoring and onsite staffing for six hours every other week at a cost of $16,998 a year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to allow the clerk's office to sign the contract for remote monitoring and onsite staffing, six hours every other week at the cost of $16,998.
Support.
Yeah.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Microsoft Office Computer Software Upgrade.
In this, I've given you two different options, and just to let you know the Microsoft...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know the same yearly thing that you disagree to, the High Tech System Service...
A yearly contract.
That one year?
This is one year.
The one year. Thank you.
The Microsoft suite of software has not been updated, I don't think, since I've been here. And it's definitely time. Couple, three years ago, when the new, when everybody else was upgrading and we didn't, I actually found a fix for it that was free from Microsoft, but it's not working anymore, and it's time to move forward. I've given you two different options. One is called Microsoft 365. And what it is, is it's actually a subscription as opposed to buying the product and, at the store, and there you have it. The subscription automatically updates itself whenever something new comes out, so you're always up to date and always have the most up-to-date version. It also includes all the emails and all the website stuff, so we would be able to just continue using IT right. Right now, that's costing us $500 a year for the website. And for those that work on the website, which is me and Karen Keltz, it is not user-friendly. Hopefully, the Microsoft version, I would hope, would be more friendly than what we're using now. So that's one. It pushes the upgrades. There is stuff for web conferencing. I was trying to explain to Chris the other day, you could actually have a conference and be looking at the same thing that, let's say, Steve Jopich is looking at from his office. You're both looking at it at the same time. It's called WebEx. So that's included. The spam and malware protection is included in this, so we wouldn't have to necessarily do that separately anymore. There's also instant messaging capabilities, which means Denny and I could be talking to each other on the computer without actually picking up the phone if we wanted to. And I'm not sure how that goes outside of us. Anyway, so that is one of the options. Now with that, the total cost for this upgrade would be $7,002.11, and it's $3,500 annually. Also, if we do this tonight and approve it in April, we get reduced cost for the first year because there happens to be, Microsoft happens to be doing a promo. But the $3,500 would be the ongoing cost. The second option is to go and purchase actually the Microsoft Professional for 21 computers. That's a one-time shot with the installation. It would be $10,329, and then we'd be in the same boat, whatever, four or five years from now, however long we waited to update again, because we'd have to update again.
So your recommendation is the first one?
My recommendation is the first one, but I really don't care either way. I can tell you, I use the Microsoft 365 at home, and I've had no problems with it.
That's all I needed to know. Any other questions?
And I know this is a big chunk of money here, but it hasn't been done...
Has to be done.
...in 10 years at least.
Now, what does the yearly charge for, I mean, what is that for?
That yearly charge, because it's a, it's a subscription. So what happens is every time there's an update to the programs, the computers automatically get them. They're, they're pushed right to the machine. You don't have, it just, a little bubble will come up that says you have an update. So they would always be up to date with the newest, greatest version.
So, the, the initial cost now would be the seven, or the seven plus the 34?
The cost today, if we went with 365, would be $7,000 for the initial and the installation because ADN will actually come out and install on all the computers.
So that's the $10,329.11, which is our initial.
The $10,329.11 is just if I, if we just bought 21...
Oh.
I think we're just going to be at, what is the total cost after one?
Right, right. If you look, if you look at this... Seven, the $7,000 now, and then $3,500 next year?
Next year.
Okay, okay.
If you look at this sheet, that's a very, I don't know who. Because with the first scenario, I should have said that, with the first scenario, there are six computers that would not get the Microsoft 365. They would actually get the boxed, and those are the nonessential computers here.
Now, do they guarantee this, this yearly fee next year? I mean, how, how many years do they guarantee it? I mean, if we, we invest the $7,000 right now...
Right.
A year from now, are they going to agree to the 34.68 or...
The 30, I use the 3,500 going by, it's like $16 a month per machine. That's what the cost is today. So is it going to go up in, in next year or the year before? It very well could.
But our cost right now would be $7,002.11.
Yes. And that includes installation.
I'll make a motion to approve the upgrade that the clerk recommends at a cost of $7,002.11.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Sir? Please state your name and address for the records.
Kirby Strauss, 34561, 27 mile. I agree with the limestone program and the ditching in that, but there's one more you should contact, and that would be the drain commission. Because all the ditches in, and I've been working at the county for 22 years, all the ditches, if you dug three-foot ditches on every road, it still ain't going to do a damn bit of good. Nobody's touched these creeks out here in I don't know how long. And a lot of what you see, like on 27 and that, the water was over the road for the last month and that, that could all be stopped if they cleaned that creek out. That's what, that's where you got to start first, because all the ditches in the world ain't going to do a darn bit of good until there's someplace to drain it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Another public comment? Motion, please?
Motion to adjourn at, I can't see that.
53, 953?
953.
8.
853.
Well, I'm sorry, 853. I don't see that either.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any other discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. Any adjournments?